Okay, good morning. So we have two sections, two big moves left this morning. We have Paris Rutherford who has joined us this morning. Paris is our expert key on marketing issues and the addendum relating to marketing in the back of Google is Paris's work. And so he'll be able to talk with us this morning about some of the specifics. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen and we'll get started on the big moves we scheduled.
Good morning, everybody. This is a great morning, a good start. I feel like we've made some really good progress over the last couple of days and so I'm looking forward to a good conversation this morning as well. We're going to start off with the big move six, the employment centers. And we'll be using that same kind of approach and discussion flow that we've been doing in the last, yesterday and Thursday evening to talk about this big move. And again, as I've been saying, as we've gone along, our graphic showing employment centers is really intended to be sort of the bubble to give you the concept. Obviously, that doesn't show every single place that there are jobs existing in Lewisville now or where they could exist, but we've tried to reflect major concentrations, general areas. And then, of course, you've got the DCTA station locations as well. But really to suggest that this... Oops. Did I get my mic somewhere, James?
Something.
Okay. Well, I don't know. So the target, what we're trying to achieve... What we're trying to achieve with this move, big move, is the four items that are listed here. Take advantage of Lewisville's location within the Dallas-Fort Worth region. This region is a very rapidly growing region, is a really strong region from the standpoint of the economy. Lewisville is in an important strategic location, so we're going to take advantage of that. Enhance the existing employment sites so that they continue to provide good, stable tax space. Provide a range of options of jobs for people who want to live, who live in Lewisville or might want to locate here and want to be close to their job. And then to think about the options for those properties that are impacted by right-of-way as TaxDA deals with the I-35 corridor. There are a couple of reasons why we think this is a really important big move for Lewisville. The first one, I think, is that key point, this is already a strength that you all have. I don't think that that's something that is necessarily clear to people around the metroplex that Lewisville is such a job center as it is. I think that's another one of those assets that you have that hasn't been communicated quite as much as you might think. So you're already... So this big move is building on that existing strength, and I think that's an important point. Obviously, having a strong and diverse tax business base gives you a good tax base, but it also is a more stable tax base because you're not solely reliant on one kind of industry. You don't have the situation as Richardson experienced when they were so focused on telecom and telecom fell apart. So having some diversity is this goal. We've talked throughout this process about how to take advantage of your proximity to the F W and that from the standpoint of locations for businesses that have international connections for whether intellectual distribution or what have you. And those locations, the existing employment centers, those physical areas are ones that we would like to see strengthened as part of this vision. And then lastly, people, a lot of folks would rather not spend their day driving back and forth between their job and their home. They'd like to spend it with their friends and family instead. And so to the extent that you can have good, strong employment base, that helps you on the residential side of things to be a good place to live because then people can shorten that commute time. So all of those are reasons why we think this is an important big move. This big move has five action priorities, and I'm going to go through these as I have been doing on the other ones and highlight the top, that top line of the major priorities. As Donna said, Paris Rutherford from our, the consulting team is here this morning in addition to Wendy and I. And since Paris's background is market and real estate, he may have a couple of comments on this one. Once we get into the discussion, if there are questions that you want to get him involved with, that's why we wanted him to be here for this one and the focal points. So the first of the five action priorities for employment centers is review the existing economic incentive programs and funding and look at the need to align them so that they support these objectives. When you're creating this plan, you've already got a palette of different incentives that are in place. And Nika can certainly talk to you about all of the things that you already do, but you think that as you adopt this vision and you set some priorities here on the big moves, that you should review those to make sure that they really are helping you achieve the big moves and that they're really directed according to this policy, these objectives. So that's the first thing. The growth committee talked about a number of things related to economic development and different incentives. We felt like the best way to approach this at this point, understanding the ideas that they suggested and knowing what Nika knows about what you've got and how it's working so far, that really that review should focus on how or if you need to adjust those programs so that they achieve the objectives that we've been talking about for Vision 20 for Lewisville 2025. Secondly, action that supports the long-term success of the employment centers that you have. And here we are talking about the particular places where there are larger concentrations of businesses, larger locations with corporations, and basically working with them to help make sure that the city is not creating barriers that prevent them from being successful there, having that communication. And one of those things, and Paris may want to get into this a little more, is you know, if you're a corporation and you've invested in that site, you want to be sure that the people who are going to be building around you are going to be at the same caliber of the kind of design and the kind of facility that you've put in. And so making sure that those policies get communicated clearly helps to, helps to strengthen the connection of those businesses who have already invested in locations here in Lewisville. Number three, partner with education providers to help Lewisville residents gain the skills they need to succeed. Rudy, you and I were talking about this important point Thursday night, that really we need to be thinking about the education and making sure that the folks who live here and the kids who are growing up here have the kind of skills that they need to succeed in the workforce. So this is again a collaboration with LISD and with the Chamber, again, a place where this is not a program that the city ought to go do something all by itself, but rather than the city can be a leader in helping, helping connect those dots and helping to provide those opportunities for Lewisville residents. Number four, working with the businesses that are impacted by the I-35 widening, helping them to figure out what they need to do, how they can adjust to that, if there are other locations that might be appropriate for them. So that's number four. And then number five is reviewing the maintenance codes for commercial properties and code enforcement. We got into some discussion of some of those code issues yesterday when we were talking about thriving neighborhoods, but this is really thinking about from a business standpoint, what are those things that need to be done to make sure the business areas in Lewisville continue to attract the kind of businesses that you're interested in. So those are the five overall priorities for action that we've identified in the employment centers and that obviously having those strong employment centers is critical to the long-term sustainability and desirability of this. So as we get into the brainstorming and discussion on this item, Paris, do you want to add anything as we get going? And if, so if you want to come on up here, bring your chair up here maybe.
I'll leave the children's table. No, the only, I think those are all good. The only thing I would say as it relates to employment is we all, we all know that employment has to do with location, not just physical location, but what are your employees tied into. So I think all the other big moves that have been talked about for the last few days are key to that. You know, what would make someone want to locate to Lewisville? If you were locating your job or your company, why would you come to Lewisville? You start thinking about that. I don't think it's the amount of incentives that you can deliver because you're always going to get needed by someone else that may have at that moment more money. So it's really reinvention yourself, continuing to renovate, having a real strong old town, playing off of the transit that you have in here, playing off your strengths and then creating a place more interesting than what they could get in legacy or at a price that's more appealing, but they can get something that's similar to the legacy area or something like that. So it's really more about amenities tied into location in my opinion.
So questions, comments? Does this big move reflect a direction that you all think that we need to be looking for?
Roll this incentive slide.
Depends who you talk to. I mean that literally. So incentives, incentives are important at the end of the day, it may be the icing that gets you over the goal line between you and your competition, but ultimately, and you see this all the time, I mean, remember when Boeing was walking around and when they were going around the country looking for different places? They located in Chicago for reasons that had nothing to do with the amount of incentives that they were getting. It had everything to do with the policies and the goals that they had at that time, the kind of environment that they wanted to play in.
And the chief executive lives in Chicago?
Yeah, he now lives in Frisco. But I mean, it has a lot to do with those kinds of things is where they want to be. And you know, then after that, if they sweeten the deal, you know, they may, they realize that they want to be in North Texas, they want to be near DFW. Okay, now you're competing with Irving, meaning, you know, with your neighbors. And then it comes down to, well, in Irving, they have the ability to plug into Los Polinas, which is also on transit, and they have, you know, whatever amenities we're building in Los Polinas. And then they come over to you and they say, well, what do you have that you can, you know, provide our employees? And I think those are questions that have to be answered. And I think it goes beyond typical kind of Chamber type of conversation. It's more, let us show you these environments that you can kind of be a part of and you can go have long-term activity and spot. I mean, that's what we did at Legacy. That is why Legacy is the environment that it is now because it's a fun place to look at, easy to go eat.
And I think Paris, as you were saying before, so if we, you think about the discussions that we had yesterday on things like the Green Centrepiece and the extending the green where you're talking about connecting to this asset that really nobody else around here has and making those connections where people can get to them, you know, if they want to go out for jogging at lunchtime or what have you. Paris, I think that's part of what you're thinking is here.
So imagine you're, you know, you're a CEO somewhere and you're looking at setting up regional headquarters in North Texas because of growth that we have. And your company is tied into something that appreciates sustainability or green technologies or whatever it might be. And then you read an article, Wall Street Journal talks about Lewisville as the greenest city in America or whatever, you know, or there's this major initiative that's going to capture the largest urban forest or urban, urban green area that exists in North Texas. That, you know, that needs to be elaborated on. You take note of that and you say, you call your broker and you say, go find out about this Lewisville place, you know, what do they have, what's, what are their offerings? And then they see, oh, in addition to that, you also need places to go lunch, you have good housing, you know, you start checking off those boxes. One of those boxes is going to be, what are the, what are the incentives of that? Well, because we're bringing a whole bunch into the community again, that's just part of our normal dialogue from a business standpoint. But that shouldn't be, in my opinion, that should be what you're leading with is you'll always lose if that's what you're competing with. Because there's always someone that has more money.
Is that a great answer there?
Neil, I have a question for you, Paris. What value do you see, and I have my own opinion, but it's positive, obviously. What value do you see in marketing materials particularly to commercial real estate companies that actually have holdings in your communities?
Well, first of all, marketing materials are really, really important. It's critical. It's how you communicate yourself to your market and without that, you're not communicating. So having the right kind of marketing materials is absolutely fundamental. In terms of communicating to folks that already have invested, they're your natural asset that you have in place. It's a lot easier to address and find out someone that is doing well currently and they have means to expand. They may be looking to expand outside of the community because they no longer have camp room on their particular campus. And you may come in with a good idea that says, we'd love to show you this other area and show you how you can stay in Lewisville. They're your natural first market that you all could be looking at, in my opinion, because they've already made the decision to be here.
That answers another question, but actually the question was in marketing to commercial real estate companies that have represented, have property represented here.
Oh, to the broker houses themselves?
Yes.
They're a part of a community to market yourself too, but I'm not a big fan, for instance, of a city going to ICSC and showing their wares. I mean, it's sometimes it's important to do that, but the folks that are really ultimately making the decisions are the companies themselves. They're going to go hire the brokerage companies. I can tell you, you can do all the marketing you want to in the world to the JLLs, et cetera. But when someone calls JLL or CBRE and their, the tenants that they're representing says, I want to be in this area of the metroplex based on these factors, they're going to go wherever they're told to look realistically. Now, there are times like State Farm, a good example, where they said, we want to be in North Texas, we want to consolidate our, you know, our offices and then we're bringing new folks in. We want to be on dark or in that key, actually, they said, we want to be on light rail and we want to be close to quality housing and show sets. So they were showing a bunch of different sites and they selected Richardson for a host of different reasons. But that's, that's a very rare situation where you have someone that's just completely open and they generally have a sense of where they want to be, generally speaking, and the broker is going to follow those directions. Doesn't mean they don't communicate to them, but they're not the end-all. The end-all is your, is the actual market, the folks that are investing themselves.
Do you see a positive effect with community providing opportunities for the workforce of a particular kind of to be involved in the community if they try to do it through whatever program that you offer so that they feel like they have an interest in where they work or where they live or where they work on?
Absolutely. I mean, we're all people at the end of the day, we're looking for connections and, you know, we're looking for a sense of belonging, pride and all those things. We want to be proud of where we work, you know, you want to be able to tell someone, I work in that, because I work in Lewisville, I work in a particular area of Lewisville, it's all the buzz. It's, I go back to Legacy because that's a good example. Someone says, where do you, where do you work? A lot of folks move their offices there simply to say, I'm in Legacy. And someone says, oh, you're in Legacy. Got it, you're cool. You know, or whatever they think. So, I mean, literally, it's, sometimes it's that simple. So having the workers tie into the sense of community is important. You know who does a great job of that? It's Addison. They do a really good job of that. They communicate to their corporate marketplace, their citizens, their corporate citizens, and they think about their daytime population the same way they think about their nighttime population. So they offer them access to healthcare facilities or not healthcare, athletic facilities and things like that. And they're always marketing, you know, the neat events that are going on to the businesses. So if you work in Addison and you feel like you've got all these great amenities, it's like you're in a master plan community for, from a commercial standpoint. They're one of the few that really nails it. I mean, I think they do a great job, at least from my perspective. That's a good point.
And so that, to go back to our, back to our, you know, here. So when you look at some of those areas of employment center that are there pretty close to the Green Centrepiece area, like around here and around here and around here, some of those opportunities to create that kind of address, that kind of character or identity that says, oh, you know, you're in such and such, whatever the name of one of those might turn out to be, then that's part of your Green Centrepiece idea that people say, oh, okay, wow, that's, that's cool too.
Just for what it's worth, one of the, and there's some great development that exists in those red block areas, but the reality is a lot of those places register as just places where transactions have happened. You know, if there's real estate that's gone vertical, it's on land, you see there's still some land that's left to go and you kind of get it driving around that this is a place where there's office buildings or industrial flexed there. But you compare that to some of the areas, other areas that we've talked about that you all have talked about in this process, it's different. You know, there is seriously a sense of place in an area that is, in a mixed-use area that is delivered properly, where there's a lot of different things that are going on and it's got a distinct sense, Los Polinas Urban Center. You know what that is. It's branded, it's very clear. Now they have other things that are evolving and when you talk about it, it's its own little submarket. And so you say, well, are any of those red areas something that resonate at that level within the marketplace? Maybe, maybe not.
We've done a few things, as I actually put a little word out there, several years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, we had the Smith Cemetery, old, old cemetery in Lewisville that had kind of just gone down by the wayside, just grown up and everything. And we got, we enlisted, the university helped, we enlisted, we got Texas Mexico Power, keep coming in with their employees and they donated, we used several machines going to clean that thing up and so they gave them a sense of pride, they didn't call the city, but they gave their employees a sense of pride to be involved. And he talked a little bit about, he talked a little bit about bringing this issue of pride, which is what this community kind of felt on the Biden farmers, very comfortable with about that here at the avenue. So that was it. He used to go place it all over. He'd say, is that where you come from? And say, well, it's the home of Biden Farmers. And people knew that pride. I revisit this past year, I've been working for a while, we used to have Texas officials here that did a angel tree, they adopted it for the schools and they would put it up in their center and the employees would just come and pick little tags off of it, improvise against and then the schools would go pick it up. Well, we lost that. So I think finally we're finding this last year got Chase involved in that because we have a 3,700, I think employees somewhere around 4,100, something like that in Lewisville now. So I definitely connected two of those together where they are now adopting the angel tree and doing them and letting their employees do it. But it worked out so well that three weeks later, the lady from Chase called me back and says, well, we're having a bake-off thing, but we don't have anything to do with all the foods that you're, a competition among the employees because people won't take the food because of this and that. So we got them together with Salvation Army, the Salvation Army was able to take the food. So things like that, she seems to bring in when you're showing them, because she was so appreciative of it. It seems to me like we can offer things, everyone will go to here, so we get your people involved in the community, not this place, in the world.
And you know what's great about Lewisville is exactly what you said, I mean, the name Lewisville, to me, registers up there with the best in the region and the state. When you say you're from Lewisville, people know where you're from. And I think it goes back to that pride. I look at it as there's like this pendulum that's always swinging. And back in the day, when you set up and you have Biden Farmers and you know, with that, there is a clear, distinct sense of pride that created Lewisville and you grew, maybe, I don't know what your root, but through a certain point. And then that allowed the market to kind of fly through and then the pendulum went over here and a lot of stuff happened. You had a lot of infrastructure that was built around and it all sort of raised up around you. And now it's kind of come back to you, okay, all this stuff happened, maybe it's diluted things a little bit in terms of where we used to be and now it's time to pull that pendulum back and regain that sense of awareness. And the good news is you've got better infrastructure than arguably just about any other community in Texas. Realistically, the F W, the highways that you have in rail, there's maybe 10 communities that can say that in a whole state. Not to mention the green.
Oh, yeah. That's it. Pride is where. So what are their questions? What are the thoughts and reflections on the employment centers?
How much, well, I think about places like Legacy and places that were made for that purpose. Have you, or what kind of experience is there with place-making in something that's already there, already on the ground?
Well, you know, Legacy was made by Perot to set his headquarters up and then to sell some land around it because he knew that he had light companies that would come in around him and then it was smart, 70s, 80s. And that sputtered, it slowed down in the 90s. And what we now know of as Legacy was a product of reinvention. It didn't just happen. It was, believe it or not, back in the mid 90s, you had companies that were looking to leave Legacy because they were having a hard time attracting the youngest and the brightest because they didn't want to eat in the corporate commissary, they wanted to live near where they work. That's where the idea of the town center was born. So it was reinvention, actually. It doesn't seem like it now, but that's where it came from. And Los Polinas is going through that right now. That's happening as we see. And there are other examples in elsewhere in the country. The issue that we have is here in North Texas is we're not quite old enough, you know, as a place like Boston or New York or somewhere where it's been there for so long that the actual employment force have been reinventing themselves. I mean, downtown Fort Worth, you see some of that. Dallas has been trying uptown, Dallas is a great example of that. It's a hot office address, that's been for 20 years now, but it was invented out of housing and restaurants, basically.
And obviously, we're moving 2025 year plan, so we're talking years in advance. Right now, the mixed use, we've talked about that quite a bit. Shops at Legacy is a great example. Austin Ranch, Raydow Street, great example, live, were shop right in the same areas. From your opinion, how, and obviously, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, Legacy, shops at Legacy, that whole concept wouldn't have worked. It didn't work. Austin Ranch wasn't around, this mixed use, that same concept wasn't there 10 years ago. In your opinion, how long will this trend take place?
You mean, how long will it take you with something going?
Nope. How long will the trend, till the next trend, the next trend in where Austin Ranch is to dry up in your, what's the name of the segment they were talking about?
Millennials?
The millennials. Or they're...
That's here, that's here to stay, realistically. It's always been here. The issue is out West in Texas and places that's based on post-war growth and horizontal expansion, you have the dream of having a house and a yard and then driving in, that's all great and tell you how a 45-minute commute. So now we've finally got to a point where we're starting to urbanize. Karen knows this better than everybody, I mean, better than anybody with the Vision North Texas process. We're urbanizing now, which means now it's time to renovate that footprint that's been created. It's not like we're going to expand beyond Oklahoma City. It's not going to happen, it's too expensive. So we're at a point now where it comes down to neighborhoods and what's the quality of the neighborhood, not just the fact that there's new construction happening, we're past that. Some of that's still been a go-on, but we're at a point now, well, what area are you in within the metroplex and what are the, what's the identity, what's the pride that's associated with it?
You can only get so far.
Right. You can only, you know, how long do you really want to commute after there is, it does get to a point where, you know, even if you extend the North Polway to Oklahoma City, people are not going to drive up in the morning and back to Fort.
So they say...
We have a lot of growth coming to this region, you know, we could have 12 million people by 2015 or close to that, so there's a huge amount of growth, but it's not going to be in that old kind of framework. We have, there are certain places in the region that have the single-family detached and you all have certain neighborhoods like that, but that whole other segment that you're talking about, Paris, is, is an unmet market demand. So that's where you see opportunities.
And back, you know, 25 years ago, when I was in planning school, they used to talk about the poly-nuclear city. And they used to always point to Los Angeles, and I grew up in Los Angeles, so they point to Los Angeles as this future model. And I would say, are you kidding? LA's horrible, you know, it's traffic and all that, but when you really peel back the layers, people live in villages and they rarely leave that village. They'll do it occasionally. We're moving to that. When was the last time that you went to far east Dallas? Well, I mean, it doesn't, we don't do that much. When do I day-to-day drive to Lewisville? I'm here today, but I don't daily do that.
You could do that.
I could. But you see what I'm saying is, but you here in this bill, this is your submarket, this is your territory, it's your village. And if we start thinking about it that way, like what this whole process is, it's renovating, it's renovating the house to make it the best house on the block.
But with that in mind, aren't you just moving the employment centers other places? I mean, we're, we're talking particularly downtown that everybody's going to go back there. That's not going to happen to everyone. There are a few, but that group, whatever you call them now, whatever they're going to be called 20 years from now, is almost fadish. They just go there because that's what the thing is right then. But the employment centers do change. And if the employment centers change, usually it's to follow the people that already have a little bit further because of price point or whatever it is, they want a different school. So unless gasoline gets to $12 a gallon, it could, but then you've got other things that could happen. I could see this just keep changing, new sub-traffic, outside of, going out where the land is. And then you're, you have to reinvent yourself like that, we're talking about too. So it's a little bit of both to me.
It is, and that's the nice thing about your city is that you have room for both. You have room to look at areas that are more about just kind of green-filled suburban experience. You have areas that are trying to be more like a mini uptown and you can do both. And there's room for both, there's demand for both. But generally speaking, I think the days of real estate products just showing up and saying, well, we're going to be out on the next hard corner and then, you know, 10 miles north of that, 10 miles north of that, that is slowing down as a proportion of the market area. ULI has talked about that a lot. That is slowing down. What's ramping up is making better use of our existing resources and creating... use of our existing resources and creating places that are more interesting for those that work there or live there, and it's common sense.
The ones who are, the developers now, or that have been developing since the last thirty, forty years, are the ones that are buying property out fifty miles from the core Dallas, Fort Worth. And it's mainly going north, and the Red River will be a stopping point at some point, but they are buying the four and five thousand acre ranch agreement, which is the same thing they did in the fifties, in the seventies, in the nineties.
Well, when you, and I'll move on, when you look, I agree with the comment that it's both, but historically, it's been one-sided, it's only been that. And I think that's that short side, because the fact is, that black dash line is the geography of who you are, it's where you are, that's not going to change, it's not going to be fifty miles north, they'll always be different. So all you can do is to say, how can we make what's within there something that's more appealing than the deal that's fifty miles north? That's all you can really help with.
I guess what I'm talking about though is, there's still going to be things outside. All we're concerned about here is this, this area right here, and we still have to do something with this. Reinvent, change, what if?
And I think that, you know, that trend you're talking about, where everybody just kind of automatically is looking to the further and further, and what's the next open area, you know, there, as Paris just was saying, you know, some of that is slowing down, but the other thing that I think is really important for a community like Louisville is that what happened to other cities in this region is that that happened, and that was like a fait accompli, and so then that city is left with, uh-oh, now we've bought declining neighborhoods, and we've got old commercials that nobody wants to be in, you know, we're falling down, what are we going to do?
Well, the product, the housing product that's coming in here now, is not what was coming in here thirty years ago.
Exactly. And so I think, to me, the option and the real, one of the really important things about the fact that you're doing this process now is to say, okay, we're not going to just sort of accept that everybody's going to leave us eventually, we're going to really look at being strategic and really making this a desirable market, because we do see there, not that that other trend has vanished, but there are increasingly people and businesses who don't want that. And so they are, you know, people that you want to keep here, or those people that you want to attract, as Paris was talking about, because of the kind of character, and the kind of quality, and the identity that you have. And you have more opportunity to succeed with that than you would have had probably with this.
You've got a couple of other drivers, too many times, we look, in my opinion, you look at the employment centers, and you think Los Feliz, and you think big corporate, high-rise, but you look at, you know, my world, technology, you look at what technology is allowing for as far as home and telecommuting. Yeah, we talked about telecommuting back in the seventies, but it's real, and it's here today, and it's wireless. And so what can we provide as a space where people can live and work, but they do it from this? This is my, this is a full office, I don't need all that other gear. And with the jobless recoveries that we've had, I mean, we've had three cycles of it, as far as I'm concerned, that's the north.
So some of the, I think, the interesting process that you're going through, and one thing that's, in twenty twenty-five is, you know, eleven years from now, that's, for me, that's three projects, if all are working, I'm just linearly, that's three development deals, that's not much time. And hopefully more than that, but, but, so it's not that much time, and you've got a large area, some areas are in the need of renovation, realistically, so we've been looking at some of the work that we've been doing for you all, at things like, which real estate products do you have that are theoretically able to be redeveloped from a market standpoint? Everybody knows, single-family, that's easier to figure out, because you're basically a fifth of the value of the house, house and land, it's in land, theoretically, if someone comes in, so if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, then that should be able to support a five hundred thousand dollar home, if someone came in, bought it, tore it down, and rebuilt. The same thing's true for multifamily, for retail, for office, and there is an analysis you can go through that identifies all the properties that have theoretical potential today, or the next ten years, to really go in and focus on that. Not many developers like to do that, because it's complicated, but you don't have a choice. So I think the point about communication and marketing, and that's very important, because that, those are your wearers, you know, that's what you have out there for yourself.
And I think we'll get into more of that, of the specifics of that, when we get into the next big move about the focal points, and several of those are really very, that analysis is very key to what happens in those focal point areas.
And my additional two cents, it's not just that individual worker here, but we've done it really, really well staking out that mid-market space, the MCL railroad park, Toyota Busel Railroad Park. We've done extremely well targeting that mid-market space. There's a space there for business, there's a space there for folks who are starting that incubation, or they're not going to be a giant business, but they're going to employ a lot of local folks. And I think if we, you know, sure, I want to, I want to aim for a boat-like, absolutely, I think that's awesome, but could we get the next, I don't know, could we get the next door swear?
And my question is, all right, where do we, where are we focusing? And is it a redevelopment? Is it a, is it a new development?
You've got your bridges for your big corporations, right? So that Castle Hills case, I think that's, you know, that's the next model of the big space corporate piece. We've got down by the mall, there's some nice infill that could happen there, but what could we do with some of these more central corridors, and maybe a little more industrial in look? You know, what kind of redevelopment, you know, so maybe that's where we bring in that expertise for maybe that more mid-market. I mean, we've got all that Z Rock space, right? It's just kind of sitting there.
And so that's kind of this action priority here about those employment centers, and what are the things that the city could do, what about that collaboration, what about the use of the tools that you do have to support that community?
I mean, we were one of the first cities in the country with fiber. They, when you think about Louisville, we're high-tech, and people know, businesses, I don't think, get that about us. And a small business having access to fiber and this type of thing, that's really important for them.
Do that, and I don't know if this is going to follow under now, or just talk about focus for the next one, but the, if you go back to your screen, show the map, the area that people see, people need to kind of test on, and so the, are we looking at redevelopment or what, but there is down there south of the mall, one twenty-one, my pass, all that there, we've got all those, it's a lot of centers, but there's tech facilities down there now. I guess my question is, what do you see as the benefit of water feature for those type of facilities? When I'm saying this, we got a farmer council, we count them now, we had a vision seven years ago, which we had at Akron, when we first met you, but of doing canals, we had some canals down there now, but really going in and cleaning those canals, and actually connecting them under freeway, all the way over to the mall, so that you had a connectivity there, of course, and having canals with the walkways and the pathways and stuff to do that. You see that as being a broad, you were talking about earlier, providing something, you had something to go, show a company, move in, look, here's what we've got for you, look, here's a beautiful area, kind of, I don't know if that's something that they look at or not.
It's absolutely something that we need to look at, but what I would also look at in addition to that, especially if I were you all, is what's the opportunity cost of the money that it takes to do that? And is there a way to use that money more effectively?
Okay.
And, because that, you know, if you came in and you had unbelievable flower areas and things like that, or you have this unbelievable water feature, they're both the same, but one costs a lot more than the other. And then you say, okay, so that's amenities, visual amenities. Legacy isn't about visual amenities, it's about physical amenities, it's about programmatic amenities, it's about restaurants and housing and office and meeting space all coming together, that's well-access, see what I'm saying? So we have the point on incentives, if it took twenty million dollars to make some of those improvements that you're talking about, and you're able to, you know, save up and figure out different programs to get to a point where you have that and your war checks, and then, and then you've got fifteen users that are in the region that have fifteen of the best restaurants around, probably a better use of that money, in my opinion, to use it to focus those fifteen uses in a concerted effort to get it in an area that really gets something going, so the market says, this is cool. Because one thing that isn't talked about, too much, going back to Legacy, that place took off, because three of the top five restaurants in North Texas, according to the magazine, when that opened, were in that project, and that got a lot of people up there. I think as simple as that.
And when you're talking Legacy, you're not talking about the EDS part of Legacy, you're talking about the one on the other side of the tow road.
Shops, the Shops at Legacy.
Okay.
And that point that Paris was just making about restaurants, we had some of this discussion, if you remember, yesterday, when we were talking about Old Town, and we'll get into more of that, and that area in particular, mayor, when we talk about the focal points, that southern gateway.
And I think, I think of that southern area, and I've walked, I went down, I walked, I looked in the, and it's beautiful, I still have to get in my car to go to a restaurant. I cannot walk anywhere, I am locked into that little pod.
So I think it's all of it, and I think one of the points we'll probably get to on the next one also, is it's the city, it's the city acting, in a sense, as a master developer, that's thinking about all of those things, looking at the opportunity cost, measuring that, and then applying a strategy, and then going long-term with that strategy. That's, there's no one else in your position, because no one, no one owns all the land out there. You know, I mean, sure, there's some big owners in places, but that's what we're talking about, there's multiple ownership. So there's only one group, it's you, or some private redevelopment agency or something like that, that gets set up, that can do that.
You know, we've been talking about amenities, but do many of those places present themselves being more compatible with the educational part of the universities that we have in this area, some kind of relationship with them, being able to locate or to use some of this vacant employment centers offered to make a connection to jobs and training and that sort of thing. We have, I think, three universities locally, in Denny County, and so I'd like to hear more about, is there a possibility that one end of this would be more appropriate to consider as far as attracting that, that element?
Yeah, I mean, education is hugely important at all levels, and to take advantage of a university you already have, and do it in an inventive way, that gets some press associated with it, I would look for ways to connect that frankly, to the ISD, and some interesting cross currents that could go on there. You know, the part city, town, or, they have this great identity and reputation, it's a hundred percent, realistically, it's a hundred percent you and the school district, a hundred percent. A lot of the things that come from that, the values escalate, but it's all because of the school district. And you look at communities that are now much further out, further to the north, what are they selling? They're selling their schools, and new product, that they're selling their schools. If you, if there was a very creative way to engage with LISD, maybe, and bring in some folks you're talking about, and the private community, and come up with some targeted programs that makes LISD the most inventive and proactive school district in North Texas, that in itself drives a ton of real estate value, a ton. Your single-family, offices, because housing attracts office and vice versa, restaurants come from that, hotels didn't follow up to that at the time. So that's, education is a huge issue.
So does that same theory apply to the university system?
Yeah.
As you're talking about for LISD?
I would say, yeah.
And just to tag on that, so, have, I don't know if you realize how important it is, our realtors, we would tell you, the principal, the high school, as great as the old high school was, and they had a lot of members, it wasn't a lot of pride in there for those young people that are attending there now, when they go to the newer high school, see all the new technology and new space and beauty and everything, those school, it was good if you kind of made, come in and rebuild that new high school there, it has really taken off, that high school. And the realtors, and now people are looking at that insane, hey, this is not as bad a area as we thought. Because they were starting, they were, I'm sure they're bothered by the state, the realtor, so, when we show people, they want to know about the schools here, they, they're not happy about the school. They're seeing that change, and that's a big portion of it.
And I think we, that was touched on, I think, a little bit yesterday, in terms of the communication and marketing, that was certainly one of the things that the committees had a lot of conversation about, is that the perception that's out there is no longer current about, about the schools, the high school in particular, I know, and I think we've got one of these items here that's talking about that collaboration with the schools.
Yeah, Thorey's talking about that, and I could beef that up a little bit, just based on some of your comments earlier, in terms of the higher end.
Well, a lot of these things are linked together, and, you know, someone mentioned earlier incentives, how important incentives are, and then we talked about opportunity costs. So imagine that you have this amazing economic development incentive program, and it has a value associated with that. I worked on a project some years ago, up in Denny County, I call it, I can, I do know that, and, and one of the big deals that they were doing back then was to get their own school, you know, their own elementary school, et cetera, so that's something that they could sell. And they set up a program where it was a transaction fee, basically, or anything that went on a sale or a lease, that was written. A percentage of that went into a private fund that was used to augment teacher salaries. It's all obviously legal estate finances, schools and all that. Why has it been cities, cities and the school districts don't collaborate in a way that's creative like that sometimes, and said, well, we're bounded by what the state allows us to do in terms of school finance, but maybe there's some other ways to augment things like teacher salaries through some economic development-related program, knowing that it drives real estate. And maybe we target in on a particular school as a beta, and you start working that, like a master developer would. I don't understand why that doesn't happen, because it's, why do we choose where we buy our house if we have kids?
Chris was talking about that during our tour, every sale of every piece of property.
Right, yeah, they had, they had a similar, they were kind of similar.
It wasn't tied indirectly with the school district, but it was...
It was an education, education scholarship.
Right.
Yeah.
No, it was a transactional, just like what you're describing.
Ultimately, it's not an assessment, but it's kind of an assessment, because in a sense, you're paying a little bit more, I guess, when one of those transactions goes on, assuming, but there, if they're not, I mean, they're in the ETJ, so they're not paying all taxes, but there are smart people that know how to figure that stuff out, all I'm saying is, that's a subject that if I were you, I would explore that, because schools are one of those fundamental platforms that everything else is based on.
I would not start looking at on what the legacies are as far as being able to supplement to be higher school, the city, the schools within the city, those supplement teacher salaries or... I'd like to focus on salaries instead of facilities.
And if you all, if you all think it's appropriate, what I suggest is that we add that to these bullets here on this first item on Employment Centers, about reviewing the current economic incentive programs, because to align them with where you're headed, with where this mission is headed, that education piece needs to be a lot more prominent than what I think has been up until now with your incentives, so this may be the place to include that.
And I agree, one hundred percent, James is right again, more specifically geared towards Louisville, if it's possible to, and I'm assuming it is, to gear it towards our schools, schools in LISD that are in the city of Louisville. One of our biggest challenges, obviously, is...
The district goes beyond your city.
ESL, and the school district's always having a hard time finding Spanish-speaking, bilingual teachers, and that's one of the biggest challenges.
Can you look at this, bilingual?
Well, I would want to just, but I want...
Take a look at, take a look at the...
I know, that's one of the biggest challenges that they have here in Louisville, the school district is...
So is the bottom line, is the bottom line to improve the ranking, whatever it takes to do that, is what that is.
And a lot, yeah, I agree, you're right, because a lot of times, that's what people are looking at, it's shorthand.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, the mayor said, you know, the school looks great, the new school, they're taking pride in it, but from the things that I've observed, you know, the ranking of Texas in general, educational-wise, I think that we need to look at improving Louisville's schools in the region, be that through an assessment or a fee or whatever it comes down to.
So, and certainly that ties in with the communication and marketing we talked about yesterday, as I was suggesting that we add that emphasis here, as this action priority for employment centers... As I was suggesting that we add that emphasis here, as this, this action priority for employment centers, looking at the best use of the incentive programs and whether there's a way to tie that in. Also, this item about partnering with the education providers. And this is where Leroy, we have that item about the higher education vocational campus that, that you and Rudy and I were talking about on Thursday. So this is the second one of these employment center action items that I think speaks directly to the discussion that you all have just been having. And so to me, that, that's another item that's included in this package in terms of your, of your employment centers. Are there other comments on the other aspects of the employment centers? We've covered a lot of broader ground as well, but to think back on the, the action priorities.
No.
Good with those?
I've, I've expressed my nuance to that.
And I appreciate you talking about the amenities. And that's my answer. If it's not that big of a deal, I'd rather focus on something else.
Yeah, and Paris's point is really an important one that, you know, you've got, you know, you could invest it in that, but you have to think about that opportunity cost. Putting your money there means you're not putting it somewhere else.
Now, if you've got an area like in the southeast that may not have sewer and stuff like that, doesn't have roads, and you've got someone that comes in and they're live, they've got a easter in tow, and they say, the only way we can make this deal work and it's an open book, you can go through and look at that and audit it and says, we can't get there without this infrastructure and the city partner of this. That's a great idea, no question about it. But if it's, let's go build a bunch of canals and then build it, they will come. Boy, I would look at that very closely.
And the other part of this, again, is that connection to this overall identity and vision and those green aspects overall. So here's the, the last three of these items. We were talking about the education providers. Any other comments? Are you comfortable with these other action priorities in terms of employment center? Yes, Greg, on your head?
We're already doing number four, right?
Right, that working with the, the businesses impacted by I-35?
Yes, yes. Sorry, just, just a couple of things.
I hope that's possible.
On I-35, as you know, we have some businesses that are what we call, the location of currently, the one that were built in 16s, you know, 16s, 17s. That's not the best location. They're basically underutilized on high. So although we are working with all of them to find a place, there are some that need to go back on I-35. And there's some businesses that really don't need to be right back on I-35. So the, what we are targeting is what is the best type of business to have on I-35. Moving, actually, your office campus on I-35 is simply similar to what we have on, on 121 to I-35, which what we don't have should be a very, a very large target for us. So some, every business that's on I-35 that needs to move back on I-35. That's what we wanted to, to, to make a comment on. Then the second comment to what Paris has been discussing and to what Justin Mayer said, the idea of working with the developer for placemaking. So you have a sense of place when they do develop. So it can be basically amenitizing for us to do participated infrastructure, but for them to go one notch higher and amenitize their development. I think it's very important to do with that sense of place and that place making. In the future development, it goes back to the best development that we have on I-121 and what I've announced. Because developers put that in and that, that has been a track in terms of our office and office resources.
I think the same thing, like, same thing, basically what Chris said, we did a tour the other day. What you mentioned earlier, when a business come in, they want to know what other type of businesses are going to be around. Is it going to support their type of amenity of building? That's what Chris was saying, again, I don't move to a wall building, office building, stuff here, I want to hire in higher classes. Because that's the office structure that we want to simplify as the company.
And that's where this, on this one about the long-term success, that second bullet about using the tools that the city has to make sure that the quality adjacent is going to be the same, so that people can, can rely on that and not worry about what's going to happen the next quarter and later on.
You know, it's an interesting statement in that regard is that the, I'm a firm believer that the buildings themselves don't always have to be the highest expense, but the neighborhood that they plug in and the way all that comes together needs to be a focus. Because there's plenty of great examples all over the place where the buildings are kind of, all right, there's a couple that are nice. But the place is great and, and its place resonates. Uptown is an example of that. The buildings in Uptown are pretty shotting. If you look through them, they're not very nice, but it's, it's exciting and there's things going on, there's different activities. So, so I totally agree with what you're saying, Nika. As long as everyone has kind of got their arm in arm and they're focused on the same goal and says, well, we're not going to spend too much infrastructure, we're not going to spend too much needlessly on buildings, but we're all going to spend a lot of creating the environment, it's a lot of that, and that's to me how you get there.
Any further comments on employment centers? We, we had some emphasis, but it's looking to me like y'all are comfortable with this, this direction. So the last.